Mr. Chairman, motion open.
By the leaders to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any board or committee reports tonight? Eric, board committee reports, do you want to say anything at all?
I think I'd like to hear what's going on and maybe have a word later.
Well, the only thing is where it's not on the agenda, we're really hiking back to the fact that you were, you know, they'll be talking to you on the board and you report so you can fall into that bucket, so it's not off agenda, right?
You can't fit me in, I certainly can speak anytime you want.
Any citizens' concerns? Hearing none.
You asked for a report.
No, no, we're gonna push right down quickly, but yeah. Unless Tracy wants to give her, let me get through the bump hearings, any, none. Tracy, would you like to do your report, I can do your report after this.
I don't have a report, I was gonna...
Fine, that's really good. Looking at the agenda, we are gonna take the first item on our agenda because the kids will be here tonight and everything and will help you get out of here, so it is, and Sam's here and it'll allow Sam maybe to go too. We're going to revisit, I believe Kathy was tabled?
Was tabled, yes.
We're gonna revisit the entertainment license with some clarification from a 10-7 meeting, beach coma entertainment license, so. Sam, do you wanna maybe clarify some of that right off, and you don't have a microphone, so...
I know, I was gonna say, I'm weird feeling. I guess there was some confusion last meeting as to what the entertainment license was, whether it was gonna be a year-round, which the beach coma is pursuing through the state to get relief from the building code in order to get their, potentially have entertainment in there without being classified as a nightclub, which would eliminate their frankering, so they're gonna try and, I'm sure the state's go for the, you know, a pill-like decision and go there, which we've been trying to help them through the process. And then they'll still have, even if they get that cleared through the state, the selectmen will still have the, I guess it's the final decision as to whether or not they will have entertainment at the beach coma in relation to noise. What their last months, their last meetings request was for, was for a Halloween party, I'm not sure what the night was, but it was six to ten o'clock, ten to twenty-five, from six to ten. We did institute a new one-day and year-round liquor license and entertainment forms, so with that, if they have the four signatures that were required on the form, then it would still be up to the selectmen, but in practice, what we were talking about is if you can't get those approvals from the other departments, then either further discussion between the selectmen and that department head would be needed, or it would be denied. So I don't know where, where we stand on the signatures at this point.
Right, and then we'll talk to Chief Pearson today after we spoke earlier today, so.
Kathy, did you hear back from the police department at all?
I did not, but the last time I spoke with the chief, he was saying that, you know, it's just not an issue. So like, when we got that roadblock last time about Sam and the Chief Pearson, that I didn't pursue it any further until I talked to Sam today, today was the first time I was able to speak with him.
So the timeline that she's talking about, you kind of thought the issue was probably closed, and then it seems that there was a little misunderstanding, Dave, they're talking about the one-time event versus a ongoing occurrence, so we're actually revisiting that, and she seems to have filled out the new form in completion except for the fire and police department's signatures.
Correct, the rest of the paperwork's there, but the signatures are not, so barring maybe those signatures, that's kind of our catch point at this, at this point. So we need to do something, touch base with the chief, Board of Health, Chief Pearson and myself.
Well, we could entertain a motion contingent on getting those signatures tonight.
It's totally up to the selectmen.
If it's up to the board, anyway, so, and then we could have discussion, but what would the board like to do?
I think that since we granted other licenses contingent upon the appropriate signatures being present, I think it's reasonable to do the same in this situation unless there's extenuating circumstances.
So, if that's the case, why don't we make a motion, see if we can second it, and then we can have some discussion, but the motion should also entertain that they have fire and police department's signatures.
That's the date I'm gonna go to. All right. I move to approve the entertainment license for ten twenty-five contingent upon the signatures of the Board of Health, Building Inspector Fire Department and Police Department, Department being present.
Is there a second for the board? Any discussion from the board?
Can I ask?
Sure.
So when we last granted the license for the reunion, is this the same, essentially the same license, we've just added more things to it at this point?
It is, that was kind of where the board and the departments got together and realized that we were really lacking a process for one-day liquor licenses, one-day entertainment licenses, so we, myself, Tracy and Sue Noyes have been already working on developing the forms, this kind of just, you know, lit the fire under us to get them out there, so it was similar process minus the forms, so it was, still be okay from those department heads minus an actual form. Now we actually have signed the signs so that there's better communication between all the departments in this line.
And for those in the audience that don't really understand how complete the form is, some of the required information that has to be attached to the application is a complete working man's compensation affidavit, current certificate of occupancy with capacity limit, floor plan, site plan, docking plan, and then the application fee, and then the four respective signatures that Damon has requested for this and Chuck seconded. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good.
That was just an ask, all right, so, all right, now you just gotta make sure you get your signatures.
Okay.
That is contingent on those signatures, so, and Damon did say four, so it's contingent on those four that are on this permit, okay? I mean, it's Board of Health, Building Inspector, I mean, Board of Health and Building Inspector are already probably okay.
Yeah, Board of Health is on there as, just, I think it's kind of a coverall form, you guys should have no issue because you already have certifications with Board of Health, whereas someone that might be having a one-day event may not have Board of Health certification, maybe serving food, doing something on the hall, so we just want to bear eyes on each one.
And Kathy, would you speak with the fire chief and the police chief, the decision will be reflected in this minutes as a positive decision, so you have that going for you now?
Okay.
Because they didn't know that before.
Right, that's what I did, chief, I did speak with chief Gadsen last week after the meeting, and he was saying that, well, you know, Sam, Sam said no, that that was discussed, so, like I said, I didn't get to speak to Sam until just today, with him being back, so then I tried to Chief Pearson again, was unable to get him, so.
Well, this, this puts a different, I mean, obviously a different complexion of things, so, all right?
Thank you.
If it's okay with the board, I would like, and Tracy, you don't have an administrator's report?
No, we're just gonna go along.
The first day I haven't forgotten, first day. Before we go through the rest of our agenda, because CPC and FinCon have been kind enough to come for a joint meeting, if it's okay with everyone involved, I'd love to skip to F on our agenda, and we're gonna enter into somewhat of a final review of our warrant, including the Board of Soughton and the Finance Committee, and CPC's here tonight with the new chairman, present for CPC, so. Frank, I was thinking that it might be advantageous for you to maybe enter into, do people have the warrant in front of you, did you, everyone hand clapping? I know, all right, then we'll share, Frank?
Yeah.
Do you have one mic, Jeff? All right, let's do this, we'll share, we'll leave one. Frank, why don't you start and maybe go through the articles, but especially the articles that you guys, when you had your meeting and you established a report, and if it's possible, before you enter into the explanation of your report and the explanations of the articles, for my sake and the people in the audience, and if we get this televised, can you explain the three ways these articles, are they more unfunded, so?
Yeah, the three basic resources to support funding articles, S E S T M, or the A T N, I forgot my name, but the first, the stabilization fund, which by the way requires two-thirds of vote at town meeting to draw a measure of stabilization fund, or free cash, which is just a majority vote, and as you probably saw, there are a number of articles that propose a transfer for free cash, and by the way, Tracy will report it, she hasn't read it, that we're at a period of shape for free cash, for starters, or the reserve fund, and of course, the reserve fund is sort of the domain of the Finance Committee, with approval, obviously, of Tracy, she usually proposes for, for it to be transferred normally, but we've got a reserve fund that hasn't been touched yet, is here, we have about a thousand, and there's one article that we'd like to suggest be moved to the reserve fund, maybe moved off the warrant for the S T M.
Well, why don't you head into the articles and we'll give to that one, we'll discuss it.
Oh, and the other, the other possibility is land sale account that is available.
So there's actually four?
Right, so there's four, is there a missing, Tracy?
Now, the mechanism for land sale, just time meeting, same as free cash?
But most of the articles as presented identified funding source, so if we wanted to change it, we'd have to make, we'd have to petition town council and ask her to interpret it, I usually leave it blank, but it was the desire, what to put the funding source in the article, but the motion would have to identify further if we wanted to change it.
And it helps us to be recommended. Now, I was just thinking that Frank could maybe go through these, wouldn't it be better if I went through them and you went through them? What's best for the, what's best for the board?
Has the FinCon already taken their votes?
They took their vote last, last Tuesday.
So why don't you tell us?
Well, except for there's some questions that, why would that be, we're hoping some may get resolved for tonight, yes, all right, head into it, Frank. Okay, can I just ask, has the capital planning committee met this week, I sort of got...
We had a half an hour.
And you're the new chairman?
Same.
Well, a couple of the articles were on hold pending of the review of the capital planning committee, so maybe that's been resolved, maybe it's been resolved at this point. For the most part, we were pretty favorable to the need for adding articles, we had some questions about the way the money should come from, in some cases, in some cases, I'll go through them. The first article was to authorize payment of a residual FY14 invoice from Steve Tree Service that wasn't paid in FY14, and basically to transfer free cash, it's hard to express that FY14, but free cash is available now, and that was for thirty-six fifty, and we approved that.
And that was a bill that just hadn't been paid, right?
Right, so that was announced and approved. The second is to adjust certain appropriated accounts, as listed in the warrant, you probably saw it listed on it, in front of you right now, to cover unanticipated additional expense for FY50 totaling thirty-eight thousand and seventy dollars, and we went through the accounts and we were pretty favorable, there were two classifications that we made, but it didn't materially affect our opinion, we voted in that, so we approved that. We won't approve it, I mean, recommend it. Article three, to transfer fifty-seven hundred for free cash, paid for a required O P E N actuarial update by the firm of Primoris, I don't know if you actually indicated that in the warrant, but that's what it's for, every three years is supposed to update our actuarial forecast by law.
That's for retired employees, yes.
That's for retired, all retired employees, it's an actuarial forecast, and it's actually fifty-seven hundred, it was less, initially it was like almost ten thousand dollars, so it's coming down as they get up the learning curve, and we approved that, you know, so. The fourth article is to transfer sixty thousand for free cash to purchase and install septic system on Mantor Field, and we put that on hold pending CPC, because CPC had not reviewed that yet. Also, the Board of Health, I was told, had some questions of CPC, please. The CPC did approve this, but the day before we met, I got word from, from the Board of Health, that there are some really late changes to the plan, namely to put in a grease trap, and that may materially change the design of the septic system, so they wanted to go back to the engineer and find out what impact it would have, they didn't think we'd have much at all, and based on that, you know, we approved it pending, or we recommended it pending the review from the engineer, assuming that that's been done at this point, they thought it would be done like within a day or so.
Does anyone, do you have any word at all?
Because the last word I had from the Board of Health was that they approved it, but that was probably two months ago, so I'm not aware of the recent changes, but I don't think that changes.
Was that a connection from the Board of Health or from the, the health agent?
That's different, yeah.
Yeah, sorry, it wasn't exactly the Board of Health.
No, is that gonna have?
I've been looking forward to it.
Well, it has to have Board of Health approval before it goes forward.
So I don't see that as, as anything?
No. Yeah, we voted unanimously to approve, just for clarity, assuming that any change would not be material in any case.
Article five.
Article five, to transfer seventy-five thousand for free cash for engineering destruction services for the design of Town Hall Pump Station and Force Main, and that was the one which we were applying to approve, but we felt it should be on hold until CPC formal review, and was that done tonight?
CPC did receive the Title V inspection for this particular septic system, which is a town septic system, it's in failure, we also had received a preliminary request for the study, we believe functionally that all major capital studies should have a proper study in advance, so this evening we approved that request to fund a study for the design, implementation and construction of a service to upgrade our failed septic, so CPC approved it for one extension.
Okay, so we have it formally voted, should we vote right now?
I'll move to recommend Article five.
Second.
Thanks for the discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
So that's seventy-five thousand, and that needs to be done, by the way, it's our changing, regardless of the police station decision, which is still pending downstream, I guess, but that has to be done for Town Hall.
Well, I don't think you'd want to move forward without an agreement, I mean, maybe this, some of these things, I mean, engineering, some engineering, as I remember, the engineer for the highway around on two CPC, right, I mean, I don't think of it as a five-year useful lifespan, but I suppose it is, or would be something that would attribute that...
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's something that's better than last, more than five years of work.
Well, the engineering studies are dead before the end of the year, but anyway.
Out of curiosity, how old's the current system? It's not that old.
Current system, Title V failure, try a proper engineer, so it's in failure.
No, I said, how old is this current system?
Yeah, they all say it's twelve years old, but twelve years are older, it sounds right there. But I think you, it's been totally, there's no way for the police station to exist with this type of system, it's just not, problems downstairs with their equipment, I guess.
Yeah, and, and, my guess was center floor myself, I mean, you don't think the last one would be older?
I don't think, you know, we don't have all the space, that's for sure.
Yeah, I know, I mean, I don't want to see the Town Hall lifting down.
Yeah.
By the way, they already know, Tracy has already gotten approval from the new report ordering Sewer Commission to add to Town Hall, as long as we pay for the connection, you know, sewer.
Which I think is pretty significant.
Yes, very significant.
Article six, Frank?
Okay, Article six was to transfer fifteen thousand for free cash to repair stairs at the entrance to the Byfield Grange Hall, and that this is a safety issue with some urgency to it, we are in favor of that, but we felt that it should come out of the reserve fund, we have the funds there, that could expedite it, that can be then, relatively quick, we don't have to go town meeting for a vote, and we didn't see the need to burn free cash further with that, so that would be our recommendation, and that was announced with one extension, to transfer that to the reserve fund, and we can address that on the floor of the SDM.
Not recommend.
But, not recommend, but explain it on the floor that where we think the funds should come from, particularly since it's an emergency prepared.
Or you could just propose a motion of no action, so it would just be removed from the town meeting, whatever you prefer.
I'm sure a couple of my board are gonna ask some questions, too, but my question would be, I don't have any problem with that whatsoever, and I, I trust the integrity of the Finance Committee to do what they're gonna say, but if we get that question from town meeting floor, I mean, is there a mechanism to assure that what we're proposing occurs?
I mean, I think the emergency nature of it, that's really what the reserve fund is for, and it partly provides the town a little additional time with not being locked into having it in by the S D M, to, you know, investigate all the options, in order to take, make one for the floor.
Yeah, we also thought it might give us a little time to look at other, of course, cross-directional, effective options to do it, and we agreed that it should be replaced, but we thought it might be a little less expensive, but I guess a year ago or so, it was proposed in a plan that, that's half of what it is now, and that puzzled us a little bit, but in any case, that's, that's a high priority.
Welcome to the panel, Dave.
Frank, I think CPC did talk about it, right?
CPC's been on the subject matter, receiving and approved the expenditure for one person absent, the dialogue extended around the fact it was properly identified and the study done to the total Grange cost at, and it was targeted for year two, which is this year, the sum of seven thousand dollars was the estimate of the engineering firm, the request that was put was over ten thousand threshold, Sam properly had brought it to our attention and indicated that it's, it's eight steps high, and it needs a solid foundation underneath it, and there is some contingency dollars in this proposal to deal with any rot or associated damage that occurred between existing stairs with the concrete and the wood building. Our feeling was is that indeed it was appropriate, identified, justified, and we approved it for one. The issue of where the money comes from is not, and I remain to make any comments there.
Now, my only question would be, and it has no, I'm not weighing it, it has no value, if we end up with a tremendous amount of rot and the concrete stairs come out to a level five, and the foundation was, you know, four thousand dollars, I mean, if we exceed the fifteen, which we, what's the next mechanism, because if we exceed at this fifteen, we would have to do something else, too.
It would still follow the command of...
Still because our...
It still, it actually gives you more flexibility, because if you have any undetermined, unknown existing conditions, you could properly find them at the, at the request.
Any questions, guys?
Well, the only question I have is about the reserve fund at this point, which is when you're gonna roll the refund, and, you know, since the septic is in failure and you have the money to cover that, why wouldn't you use that for the Article V as well?
Your septic is in failure, you mean for, for Mantor Field or for Town Hall?
No, for Town Hall.
Because it's, you don't have enough money, it's seventy-five thousand.
It's only worth ninety thousand.
Because ninety thousand is reserve fund, we have a whole year, a whole year of emergency.
Yeah, we can't, yeah, no, to quit seventy-five, so, now, would mean that...
And the engineering is more of a paper cost than an emergency association, so.
Good question.
Yeah, very good question.
That's why we have to talk to some of you.
So procedurally, we would make a motion of no action?
Well, it's a safety issue, and that gives urgency to everyone for something like this, I believe at Article...
So just, just to be clear about that, that means that you don't, the town can go ahead and do that without having to wait for special town meeting?
Well, we've got to get, we've got to find out some way to get it through, yeah. We're a little bit flexible in terms of, we need front plate.
We probably would do that.
Yep, yeah.
If we'd be wanting to have tonight, we'd probably, we'd probably do that.
Would you...
You have a warrant.
We have a warrant.
Would you entertain a reserve fund transfer request in the amount of...
Well, we don't have any, we can take two fifteen thousand.
Well, I think, let me ask one question, so CPC made a recommendation to go forward.
Correct.
And it was fifteen thousand dollars.
Correct.
So, how that we fund up to fifteen thousand dollars for the replacement of these stairs, if that changes, and it's certainly, economy of scale, we want it as cheap as possible, but it's taxpayer dollars, but certainly if there was another issue that appeared, it would be appropriate for let us know, and it would be against employment.
Sure.
So?
More discussion?
Yeah.
No second.
Okay.
Did you make something?
No.
Up all in favor?
Aye.
So?
I'm, she's her current...
That's up to fifteen thousand.
Another money is available as of tomorrow, it's not just like...
Yeah, I'll send you two of them, so.
Okay.
Six, six.
Six, six.
I don't really get a truck, I can't go on it.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, she's her current...
Six, we want to approve it. Okay, Article seven, the transfer, really, Article seven, okay? Transfer sixty thousand for free cash to fund professional services for master plan and open space and recreational plant update, and we're comfortable with this, we request that it be delayed from the annual town meeting to get more detail, and the planning board is working on this pretty diligently, there's a new plan that we've just got from John Weiss, Marshall has been appointed by, or requested by Finance Committee to be liaison with the planning board, and this, this amount will be transferred in free cash to an open account that'll be overseen by Tracy, so any expenditures will have to be properly impeded in the marketplace and so forth, Tracy will, will be involved with that, so, so we're, we voted seven zero to approve this based on that.
Frank, before you continue, I don't know if this is that unorthodox or not, but where you folks have a designated legs on to the open space and master plan committee, and I'm not positive we have one... and I'm not positive we have one now.
Hey, can you remember, I can't remember.
So the, when we did the previous revision of the space plan, we set up a committee, the open space plan, and separately, we revised the master plan, as we recall, we had a separate committee, and they were reported to the planning board through, so that there could be members from other boards who could be in our, so the open space committee had, you know, some of our normal avenues in town and stuff.
And you think it would be, you do western, if something's a lot?
Yeah, I'm back here.
Yeah. There's actually again, that the, the master plan committee and the open space committee would be set up to include not only the visiting planning board, but also other appropriate members. So I mean, if you wanted someone who was slept with, then you could then let us know at a later date, and you could ask if anyone would like to do that.
We would want someone, we would want someone.
Would that entertain a motion tonight of someone that would like to maybe step forward to do that? Is there anyone that would like it?
Going to be four.
I'm looking that way. So I'd like a motion, if there is one.
I'll make a motion that they mount next, the liaison for second, the open space.
Are this going to be two separate committees or?
Well, we have, we have the open space committee, which I think will be primarily involved with the open space plan, and there's a lot of overlap.
So this would be the master plan committee.
Any discussion?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Okay. Article.
Okay, let's go.
Article eight is to cease assessing excise taxes under MGL Chapter fifty-nine on certain animals, machinery, and equipment owned by individuals and non-corporate entities that's being engaged in agriculture. To our knowledge, and we looked into this, it's never been done, we've never imposed a tax.
And the assessors voted to do this also, so.
Okay, so we, we voted no action, will, will the town. You know, furthermore, corporations are not involved, so there's not a lot of volume here. In fact, we asked Tracy, and she said that she believes that West Newbury, where it was funded, it amounted to about eighteen hundred dollars total. And there's a lot of hassle, administrative work, and nothing to count that.
They would have to physically go out and count chickens. This, this is really just a housekeeping. We don't assess them now, but we have, that town meeting has never allowed us to not assess them, so this is, this is housekeeping.
Article eight, nine. For many towns, current bylaw regarding vacation to allow carryover, prior fiscal year, is unused vacation for up to, but not to exceed, any days. We felt this was the personal board's debate, which has already proved it. There's no detail at all on if this, if it will cost to this, it gives flexibility to the employees. Ninety days seems reasonable, and Tracy says part of the problem with making people use it or lose it before they enter fiscal year is that they all bunch up and use it at the same time, and that's a problem staffing wise. So, so we're okay with that, but we took no action, that's personal. It was will, will the town to action that we took. I'm not doing this. Article ten, to instruct the board as selecting to petition the general court to enact a law, instruction to commissioners of Fish, Water, Land, and Recreation, vehicles to convey certain marginal land in Newbury to Richard J. and Pauline Boudreaux, on which they had apparently been paying taxes for many years. And we thought it sounded true, it sounded afoot, if they take this off the axle, it would be one. It seems the right thing to do, if they want to pursue it, to allow them to pursue it. So we recommend the approval of this unanimous agreement.
Now, the lawyer for the Boudreaux is here tonight, she's a lieutenant too, if there's any questions of the finance committee, and I think you're pretty much on the same page too, but if anyone has any questions of clarity, I could probably answer it to them too. So your goal was to recommend.
Yes, we had a recommendation.
Good lawyer never opens your mouth. On the decision.
Yeah, well, you're going in the right direction.
That's Article ten, Article eleven, to require, to require an extended buffer and review period for prayer to allow demolition of historical structures. We, we took no action, we didn't vote on this, we voted will the town. And we also thought that maybe this article would be better served at the spring, end of town meeting, where you have a better turnout, and you get more input and so forth, unless it's urgent. That's just a suggestion, it's not a recommendation.
That echoes a lot of comments that I've been getting also, so. Yeah. From former members on the staff.
Well, it seems like that may be an option, if there's a lot of pushback on that.
Again, that could be consideration for take no action at, at the SDM, if it was like, if he could do something.
It's funny, I mean, I thought about this a little, when it had been timely mentioned to agree about it. And then I thought, you know, sometimes special town meetings are put in place for very, very, very important decisions too, so. I mean, if it is a dog issue, it places a big tax. So, I don't know, but it's up to, certainly, that's a valid concern.
I think that was just a general discussion, that was held.
My only fear is, in some respects, my only fear is, if that stays in place, it has to be, I think, articulated in finite by you gentlemen, so that people don't understand you don't really like it.
I don't have any opinion of it, really.
We don't have anything.
It's only be, it would be more appropriate to be a special, it's right at that meeting, when you have, when everyone's really expecting the barrage of zoning, not that they stay and listen to it, but. But at least it gives them opportunity, they're expecting it for that.
So to pass this, we need a quorum, and a two-thirds vote at town meeting? Special or otherwise, right?
Two-three five.
Bylaw change. Yeah.
Is that the, is that the, we can change in bylaws?
It's not.
The bylaws, the bylaws, two-thirds vote, right?
Yeah. I mean, clearly, if we don't have a quorum at the special town meeting, then we have no choice, we can table it to the next one. I don't know, I don't see any advantage to waiting longer and having more people discuss it, since it's not a very. Hi, but any issues?
As far as I can tell.
It is.
It is a question.
In the last couple of years, we've lost a couple of, which some people would say are very important, sorry, structures. The historical commission to draft the bylaw, many communities now have these bylaws.
We could always ask the chairman of the historical commission.
We could also, I think, at least for me, I mean, we've got the chair of the planning board here, and they have to work with this, but it's all.
Well, no, it's actually, this is the purview of the historical commission.
Well, but they have to work within that guideline, don't they? When they do, you know, subdivisions that contain the historical.
Well, that's a little different, because in the open space. We can, you know, view, like an extra building, lots of things, we've done this a couple of times already, since the open space bylaws and, oh, well, finally, this is all visible, for example, we have a farmhouse in the reserve and developed by Richard Building Lodge, which is a great. Yeah, your property.
And then we did one of the public control builds, so we had the foundation or something, I was trying to say.
But it was a house, and we, we tried to save it without success. Somebody was interested in it, and that was attractive. And I personally am favor, I personally moved three houses, you know, in this situation, so I have all the experience in spending my own dollar on these, so two of them I still own, actually. But I think it's, it's a good bylaw, but I completely understand the variation for something like this. But again, we still have the special town meeting, people who are there will still have to vote to take that action. It's not like we can move it off.
Does it still have to go with the question?
It has to go to the attorney general's office, I believe. And just to, just to let you know that the historical commission is having two workshops on this this week, on Thursday night and Wednesday, and Saturday morning, you know, there'd be enough for a presentation.
Right. And, and that, and town council said that was fine, that the timing of that was already good. I asked you today, so whatever the, whatever the board is, that's fine.
Well, it's not since the C O town meeting, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that pretty much covers our report on the warrant.
Well, thank you very much, Frank.
Thank you.
That was awesome.
All right.
Kathy's got that in a minute, and, and Matt, you picked that up in a minute, and you've got a list of it somewhere too, right? What your recommendations were on each article?
It's already in the minutes of the finance committee.
All right. Thank you very much, Frank.
You mean this, didn't vote by?
Yeah, we updated Article V to, from pending review to.
Approved.
Approved. Things have to forward.
I was just going to say, I got a list of it.
Yeah, okay.
All right, moving right along in your business, anything else from the floor before we go? Eric, we, we wanted to.
Sure.
Eric Swan, Fortino Farmway, Chair of Municipal Building Committee. So Municipal Building Committee is making progress, I feel, although we're a little bit in a, I guess, a stall, and the question being, it was brought up, I think it was discussed amongst people, that in terms of the board select, and in terms of the finance committee, and in terms of the capital planning committee, that maybe we should have a meeting in order to discuss, discuss this together. Municipal Building Committee, in terms of being formed, you know, we've, we've charged ahead and we have a program. We have a budget for both, a proposed budget for both the town hall and the police station, and we have three site options. They're very generic, and they, I think they, three options cover any option that you could possibly think of. Build here, put the police station somewhere else, put the town hall somewhere else, and then put the other facility here on this spot. And so with that, and with the budgets, the budgets also proposed, and they're very rough, it's kind of my numbers, in terms of temporary facilities, what the sewer-to-septic connections would be, what moving costs might be, what land costs might be, and so, you know, we don't really have a schedule, but a schedule can come together quickly. I think we're, we're at mercy of the process and of the political thought. And we hope that somehow we could set that schedule so that it doesn't derail the issue. The need issue certainly has been there, it's right there below us, it's not going away, it was identified a long time ago. And so we need to, as, come together as a group to make the schedule move forward. I have a comparison of projects list, both from the consultants that has provided us to us. We also have the opportunity that Salisbury is going through a similar process, and we can take their numbers and extrapolate the size, the number of officers, the programming they're proposing, and, and compare and check and balances of what we're proposing. And we'll have, or can have some letters of support. I think what I'm hung up, hung up with as chairman in terms of the committee is we have a fair amount of information, but I'm not sure how to package it to move it forward, to get it out there, so that appropriate people can take action. And I guess I'm, I'm learning, and I've now read through the bylaws, Chapter twelve, and I understand what now capital planning committee is responsible for, and I think the language is quite clear there in twelve point two, specifically concerned with the physical facilities. And so obviously, capital planning committee has to get on board with this, and being a little bit of a rookie in terms of being a chair to the board, trying to figure out what, you know, what we need to do. And if I know what we need to do, you know, we'll get it done. If the deadline's coming to no end for first, and we have to get something to get the project that Municipal Building Committee has put together, then, you know, we will do that. And it may need a little help, you know, filling out a form, or just figuring out how it gets packaged, but, you know, I went back and I looked at what was submitted for a funding proposal for the, for the fire truck, and it wasn't any great sort of proposal or package, and I think, I think we have the information, just need to figure out how to, to, to do that. And, you know, we may not have a site, and I think the site might be the most politically charged option of discussion out there, but I think the site will champion itself when the costs come in for specific sites in order to, to make sure that we're, we're, first of all, fulfilling the need and fixing the facility and providing great value to the town for the longevity of the, of the facility that we choose, and doing the most economical, the most economical project. So, I guess with that, I'm here tonight to ask for help from board select, from the finance committee, from the capital planning committee, in order to figure out how to move this forward and not just sit there and.
Eric, a question, at least from me, and I think I had spoken about it with Tracy. I think it may be time to float it out, because we have mostly appropriate boards here, including planning board. Would it help you and help us, I knew each board was going to kind of choose by themselves. You know, I think the planning board has already come to some sort of conclusion. But would it help, because we might not all be talking about the same things? Do you think it would help if you had planning board, finance committee, capital planning committee in selectmen, like we used to do at certain times, maybe over in the fire hall to one large meeting, and kind of toss this around? Would that help, or would it make it more confusing? Would you rather have each board give you a fair conclusion?
I think it's a we, not an I, kind of function for the town, and, you know, part of the process is deciding on the project. The next part of the process is getting it out to the public, so that the public knows, the residents know what, what's coming before them and the reasons it benefits them, or the reasons that if they care not to choose and turn the blind eye, what they might be choosing for themselves, in terms of public safety efficiencies, so.
I was just going to say, this might be an opportunity to, at least initially, get somebody from each one of the boards on, to meet with you guys, so that we can take a really quick look and say, okay, this is what we are concerned with, this is what we have to, to look at, so that we have a package that, and a smaller number might work a lot faster than we get everybody. But a smaller number might be able to put it together in a, in a way that's really intelligent for others to look at and say, okay, here's where we are, here are all the factors we put up. We can put up a matrix, a decision matrix, if you will, that says, here's what we've looked at, here are the pluses and minuses, here are the costs, so that we have something that is a presentation that makes sense from each, each particular committee's point of view.
I mean, that makes sense, so you're speaking about making sure that. So you're speaking about making sure that each committee, like the planning board, has already done, meets, and establishes their criteria and their thinking. And then maybe one person.
I agree.
Forward to meet with Eric as a collective from each board. I would even suggest that the police chief make a formal request to upgrade, expand, and/or repair his current facility. And start it as a request, and then work your way into what the preliminary cost may be to, for completing engineering and site work, evaluations, moving it forward. Doesn't seem to be the first step that I would suggest.
I think, well, that's certainly, that's in the process right now. The letter's being drafted, and the question is how we present backup information that we present so that we have a complete project and not just a letter saying, I need new facilities. But, you know, the bigger issue is, is to bring everybody together so as we don't, we don't, you know, we don't all meet, and then we leave and it goes in separate directions, all different directions from the boards. I mean, it's a big enough decision that we need, I think everyone needs to hear the issues and who they're being spoken to, or spoken about. You know, you could look at this project two ways. They have a need, and I think we, we have a program, and the way the program will be presented, it will be clear what spaces are required, what spaces are typical, and what spaces might be, like, you know, the holding cells, there's a Massachusetts building code that says you need X. You can't decide, any of us can't decide on behalf of that. We need to do that, that's where it is. Next one is, you know, you have electrical closets and stairways and things, you're not gonna debate that. You might tweak them a little bit. And then the last thing we're gonna do is we're gonna decide whether the chief's office is 350 square feet or is it 300 square feet. And those are the decisions that we'll be able to make. With that, you can look at the project two ways. The program solves the needs for the town hall, solves the needs for the police station, and we can manipulate the spaces in order to build an appropriate building to provide the best value for longevity of that building. And that could happen here, or it can happen somewhere else. Or we can cement, we can calculate, we can figure out a budget, and we can just work backwards and say, that's all we have to afford, and that's all we're gonna do. So, I'd like not to go the budget route. I understand it's, you know, it is a lot of money. It's more money than's been talked about on, on a lot of things, and the townspeople have to understand that. But townspeople also have to understand that it's a, you know, it's a public safety issue. And it's been something that's been overlooked for the past, since 2006 master plan, and it's been brought up. And I guess I'm, you know, I'm going through and reading about the capital planning committee's responsibility. You know, there's a building assessment report that's step two in the CTC's sort of responsibilities of issues, and so I don't know where the, the facility of the police station is on that, that list. It would seem that, you know, is it, is it at the top of the list, or is it even on the list? And here we are, talking about this for 10 years, but, you know, Capital Planning Committee also wrote that report in 2012. And I started writing another report, and all I wanna do is just cut and paste the first page, because it's all, we'll put it right there. You can't say it any better than that, in the 2012 report.
I mean, the need is certainly, certainly, Michael, do you wanna say something?
Yeah, I do.
Go ahead.
Okay. I had talked to Eric earlier in the year, and he wanted me to look over the plans and to see how it was for space. And as you go into different parts of town, the townspeople will come to you and will say, we know we need a police station, why do we need a town hall? So they're, they're on the one for one, I guess, plan. You know, if you, if you build a police station, you're not gonna build a town hall. And if you build a town hall, you're not gonna build a police station because you can't afford two individual buildings at different locations. What they don't think of, and I've worked under this, it works very well, where, where you build the police station and, and the town hall together, because the police station will provide security for your town hall and everything that goes on there. But on top of that, there are numerous conference rooms. We're meeting all of them, you know, on the other end of town, or whatever. And we need conference rooms. Well, the two together will give you numerous conference rooms. And I don't think you'll ever, in other words, I don't think they'll be empty, but I think you'll have plenty of space to do both. And you could actually work for quite a while. I've worked under this system, we're the ones that finally got police station. We had police station, we were here. We respond from our houses.
Were you, were you chief here too?
No, I was never chief here, I was chief in Raleigh.
Right, but when you were an officer here, you inspired from the house?
Yeah, you started from the house, yeah. And we put the car up, I'd take the car home at 2:00 o'clock in the morning, and you'd go to bed. We all had blue phones. So I had to answer the blue phone, and I pretty much stayed dressed. And after there was a call that came out, I'd go out in the cruiser and answer the call. You know, and sometimes the deputy chief would meet me, or whatever, sometimes it was, you'd have to take the call. And that's dangerous. That's not a good way to do business. I almost get killed twice. But anyway, but if you take the facility, town hall, they go together. I even think this goes together better than the, the fire and the police. Like I say, it'll give security to your people that are coming in at our town hall. There's money coming in around here, and plus.
The police here, yeah.
You're gonna have, you can share the space, because, you know, you may have a meeting for an hour or two, then you have law. And the police chief can say, like, we've got a murder investigation, I'm gonna, I need to, I need these two rooms, probably this week, or whatever. And you do, that's the way, that's the way it would go. And it's workable, and I know it's workable. And that was one of the things I liked about what you showed, what I have at home. I had to give you the.
Right, in that report, what you're talking about is shared spaces, and if you, and list, the budget that I'm trying to put together is trying to identify that, that there's 850 square feet to 1,300 square feet of shared spaces. You'd only need one elevator here, as opposed to two facilities having two elevators here. And there's lots of issues that get solved, like accessibility into this building if it was rebuilt. But, sorry, I was gonna say that for the end. We're not at that point. But yes, there is, and there are also synergies to location in town hall, that the town hall and police station, and fire station are next to each other, and people can identify that, and people can see the presence of what's being provided to them in town. And there's also tangibles, which is how many times did the police come into town hall to go to assessors' office, or the clerk's office, or, you know, in here for discussions or for data? It being, you know, jointly connected, or at least within proximity of themselves. And from the options that we have, you know, some of those options champion that, some of those options spread it apart, and some of those options that would need to be discussed. But certainly, that was, I think, the thought with the fire station, was that if you combined two facilities, you would actually build less space than if you had to figure out, let's just do police, and then all of a sudden pick up the fire department and say, we need to help fix this. You would be building some extra space there.
So build in a little bit on what Marshall suggested. Am I envisioning that we're gonna go back to choosing within our respective boards the choice that we would like best? And then maybe put someone together, like Marshall, that's what you suggested, right? To go to meet with the municipal building committee? You know, carrying the information from the boards.
I wouldn't make it quite so limited. I really like Marshall's suggestion, but I think it, we need a little give and take first.
Yeah. Now, you're back to, you're back to the big meeting again?
Yeah, in other words, if each of our boards had a representative, maybe you could have to speed with all the work the next committee's been doing and so forth, come back, report to the respective boards, so then we can.
Okay.
Discuss it, as opposed to, you know, you guys issuing yet another report, cutting and pasting from previous reports and so on. But just, you know, it seems to me that what we can do is, given the present circumstances, present costs, we can build on what we've done before. We still have the three options, and I think that pretty much covers it from wherever we build, one or the other, or both. It's like, that's, I could make a lot of sense.
So the difference would be, instead of really kind of choose earlier than not wait to make a choice till later after the information hits the respective boards?
Yeah, I mean, I, I wouldn't wanna make a choice without.
Makes sense.
No more information.
I'd like to do what moves the, the process along and not, not.
Exactly.
Hung up.
You gotta move it along.
Well, I think, I think what Eric's gonna be worried about is, and I don't know if that's true, but he's probably kind of coming to the end of the information that's available to us as boards. I don't know how much more you can get out. Can you get a lot more out? I mean, are you ready for the boards to kind of have a decision?
I'm ready to go.
Yeah, we're ready.
And it's all included in your report.
It's, I have, yes, we have a report from an architect, from an engineer, I've put together, together. I think what, what's needed is probably just some summary bullet points in order to walk somebody through how that came about logically, and then there's some additional support information that goes into that report.
Is it fair to say that our next step would be to engage an engineer to start doing some design work? But we need a location, we need to know what direction and everyone, we, we keep kind of as a committee going around about what's appropriate cost.
Right, and locations have costs, and locations have probably political issues to them, and, you know, is it gonna be costs that champions the day, or is it, is, you know, how's that gonna go?
November 1st seems to be a critical date.
Yes, yeah.
And something has to get to that committee by November 1st.
To be within, to be within the regulation, it's not mandatory.
I was just gonna say, he better get flexible.
Well, he's already got.
He can always fill out the form that we're.
That's not, the November 1st poll is easier.
Okay, that seems to me, people want to talk to the people who are sitting in this room right now.
Right.
And these, and these are the people that, and I thought it was your suggestion, we sit down together with Eric and let him go through his, where he's at, with all the information.
And I think we really gotta read thoroughly the information we got ourselves.
Absolutely.
I really gotta.
Yeah, I mean.
But there is another, there's two suggestions. There's maybe a larger meeting of everyone, and it could get unworkable like Marshall had suggested. So it's either one or the other. We should choose tonight what people wanna do.
I'm, I'm of the opinion of, if we're gonna do it, we should all be in one room and we should workshop it. It should be something where it's a working session, where we have the space to lay out the different plans, like even on the wall, and say, okay, everybody go around the room, we do this all the time, is go around the room, first vindication, before we even get started. Give a green, green, yellow, or red, whether this is a go idea, no go, and then we count it up, and we look at them. And we all then discuss based on that, what our gut is about that location, and then we can get into the details of each. But that I think that something like that would be the most productive, rather than having them try to do a roadshow of every different board, and have, we have one set of concerns, and planning board is a different, and everybody else has a different angle. We can at least be in one room, knowing that we can work together and come up with a viable, you know, know that you've heard from all the different plans. But I really think it's called, it's basically co-creating the most workable solution.
And that was just my thought a little bit, because someone might say something, and it triggers something that I hadn't thought of.
Chuck, do you have anything to add? Chuck? Chuck, did you have anything?
Well, just reading here on the communication, Borrego was put off the term occurring on October 28th until November 25th. That loosens up a lot of time, I think.
So, do you want, okay. Do you want to close that we have a.
On October 28th, I mean, next Tuesday is our meeting, so we, I mean, town meeting, so that, that's out. But that loosens up a lot of time, I think.
You do it as a public hearing, or?
Uh, no, not yet.
Has to be posted. It needs to be there. It works on a posted.
Right.
So what Chuck, what Chuck was saying, if I understand that right, is Borrego is due in here on October 28th, and then now been asked to continue their special permit hearing for Main Street until November 25th, which leaves for October 28th.
Pretty much open.
I think it's a good idea, kind of like, I don't know what John and Martha have, or.
It'll be fine.
David, what do you think? David, what do you think?
We're already saying we're here.
How about you guys?
Yes, John?
Just a thought, I don't know if we've done this before, but a meeting of this size might need a facilitator. I'm just, we're not 20, 20, 20 people, all with different ideas.
We got, we got a great facilitator.
And I know you've got, I know that FinCon is done with, with somebody.
Maybe.
Work!
Work, Eric. Anyway.
What do you want me to say?
I won't be here. It's a, a lot of what's gonna happen is information being prepared.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
And feedback. And we really gotta read everything we have now.
We do.
Yeah, if there's, there is, there is the most current report or sub principle. Well, some of it's on the website.
Yes.
But I could spend it. If you, or even if you just point us, send one email that points us all to the same document. If it's on the website, you don't have to attach it, everybody can go there and get it.
Makes sense.
But if you just have that one big chain, we all have the same, we all know we're looking at the same piece of documentation. And if, or in advance of that meeting, if someone can prepare, like a.
Well, if I could put other documents on there.
Yeah.
Then that's the place for everyone.
But then we can, if we have access, but even at night, so that there's something physical people can look at in the room as just a quick, four bullets about each one. Yeah, like, but even having them separate, so that you can look at one and then look at the other, and give your own reactions based on each of them.
I mean, the big document we got before, Eric.
Yeah.
It's probably not gonna be even bigger than that, the new document, you're gonna have that one.
I have a budget that looks like this, that takes the options and lays them out.
It makes a lot of paper, but it might be nice to have it in front of you, so you can mark it up, I don't know.
Miracle book here, beautiful PowerPoint. Eric enjoyed it.
I'm working on one right now for town meeting, so you're gonna give me the numbers I need at the end of this.
Yeah, I got, I got a few. Eric's been a little bit, and he comes over once in a while with my neighbors. We talk over the back fence, and we don't hide our eyes. Tim Thomas, he'll write it down. Yeah, but, you know, I mean, it's not fair to keep loading him up. As he said, his briefcase is now three times as big as it was when it started.
Well, you know, and the deadlines here, Damon, or David, or anyone, Michael, anything else on my board? We all set, Mike?
I'm just saying, I, I'm perfectly happy with the workshop idea. The question is, what's the venue? Because it is a public meeting. We have a lot of people in the public, and we just, it's a public meeting, how, what we should be doing on this town.
We have worked on the.
Fire station.
I've overrided the fire station, we had a good venue, we had plenty of space, more than enough space around there.
The acoustics are awful.
Yes, they are. But you know what? We are not gonna solve the acoustic problem, I think, anywhere else. I don't know of anyplace else that's gonna give us a better job.
David, I mean, what have they got over there now? Don't they have something else? I mean, the dedication of the fire station, the PA system was pretty decent, no?
Why, we had different audio visual over there.
You gotta, look at some micros.
Well, we have the, we have the evidence that we can use them over there.
We'll get, we'll get some. I think you should determine too whether you should record the meeting, so it becomes a work in progress for, for our citizens to review or to be.
We record all of them.
I, I think it's critical, it's really the milestones from here, and what, what are they? You have an annual town meeting coming up in the spring, so what collective do we see we need to have compared by then? At a very minimum, we should have a capital improvement project identified and part of the record. Two, town meeting should be looking at something that identifies that we have a need to replace this facility, even if the cost is undetermined at that time, that we need to get preliminary funding. And that really should be proved at town meeting. So the next funding strain, it could be low six figures to get the preliminary plan done. But I think that's the way, I, I would suggest we introduce it. So first milestone. But I think that's the way, I, I would suggest we introduce it, so first milestone is get it identified as a capital improvement project and part of the annual report. The second is determine what that's going to be, but we have to work back from our spring town meeting, and, and not miss any critical, critical dates there. So maybe building on what some of the first thinking was about why the meeting, and then whatever Eric expanded upon, we can certainly be honest and try to get as much information to as many people as we can, and then if we find that we need to work further, we can go to what kind of Marshall and David were saying, and, and kind of go into a boiling plate, and then filter back to the boards. So at least it's moving forward.
Yeah, because I mean, if, if you want to target the annual town meeting, we kind of still really make progress, but there's still information, there's only way we can hand out a 400-page booklet to everybody. Even hard enough time, I mean, I know my fellow segment myself as well, we're getting paper all the time, it's hard enough to stay on top of that.
I mean, you, you're going to rely on recommendations from the collective board as well as your own review, but I think having, having a tiny date of what we want to accomplish at a minimum is, is, is a good consensus to start. Well, I mean, after we have a larger meeting, maybe several smaller, I mean, the planning board has at least reached a decision already, I should think, we should really head into making decisions within our board, what site you favor, and start down that road, because after you choose at least what site and, and what combination you favor, there's certainly going to be other things to work out. So we can't take and not make a decision on a site for months, it just won't work.
So, is, is there going to be a motion from this board to all the meeting, sort of a joint meeting?
Workshop? Or we have to schedule it, right?
Well, we have to just, I mean, I think tentatively we can make that motion, I think it would be a good idea, was just to check and make sure that fire station is available.
Location is to be determined.
Right, location.
So it sounds really funny, but I think the Cub Scouts have a meeting there from 6:30 to 7:30, but you can feel free to bump them if you like them.
The parents going to be with, can we put them in the van?
I can try, I can try to get as many of them as possible. I am actually working on a plan with the schools to see if I can clear the school calendars for annual town meetings, so that the schools don't have any, they don't have any conflicts that night, so that, and if I get the schools on board, I also would like to then go and ask Little League, soccer, everybody else that is a organization to say, can we make that night of the, of the spring a kid activity-free evening, so that parents can be more freed up to get to town meeting. Another option I'm also looking into is whether or not we can get childcare provided through the kids' club, so kids at elementary school age could be at the elementary school while their parents are at town meeting. Couple of different things going on, just as.
That's pretty good.
To try to.
That's pretty good.
Help, help get more, more involvement from families if they can.
So, I just want to understand, our, our target would be for the annual town meeting, would be to be ready to have a warrant article, do some preliminary design work, whatever you need to.
That's the goal.
To, to identify the total scope, but step one would be seeking preliminary funds, so you could finalize your plans and then determine your, your total budget.
Because this will be the biggest challenge here since he, things like the Ron Scramble in the library.
Yeah, that's right, and I think that part of it, maybe not only, you've got to think about financing, and what, what will work, public for debt exclusion, or whatever you want to do, understanding, you know, with quantitative easing, stopping our rates are going up pretty soon, and people need to understand, this is not a $12 million dollar debt, this is over time, and maybe 15 or 20 years that it will pay off, and people need to know what the impact is going to be on the tax rate.
If I'm going to ask Tracy, Tracy, so we, let's say we go to town meeting, we, we secure the preliminary funding to finalize our plans, debt exclusion has to be then at a regular scheduled election, or did it be a special election?
It can be a special election, that's, that's kind of where we're at with the committee, where our hands are tied a little bit, because we don't, we can't move to the next phase to schedule all those things until we identify what we're building and where we're building it. So that's, that's exactly where we're at.
We usually have an election in early May, so that we couldn't know that.
I have asked the town at first.
You'd only have your. As Salzberg has just done, they've gone out and announced that they need an 85 or a hundred thousand dollars, you get all this preliminary work done with a potential budget of X.
Right.
Now, they have not yet approved the debt exclusion.
Correct.
They've only approved from town meeting, probably free cash, to get to the next step, which is get your preliminary plans and all your costs.
Exactly.
So you get a really good rate.
And then at that point, where you have a design, or preliminary design, not final design, you, you'd have a, a much clearer understanding of the cost, we'd have estimates, but we'd have a, a better picture of the cost, we'd have conceptual plans, drawings, we'd have something to present to the, to the voters, to show them what we were going to build as we move into the debt exclusion.
Salzberg had a big idea, and then came back recently and said, we have a site, we have a, a better study, we've actually reduced this by a million, and here's what we need funding for, and they have a complete project, they have a scope, they have a schedule, and they have programs that will be exactly what they want to do.
So this is going to be, you know, a pretty good meeting, with a lot of, you know, work put into it now. You don't have a budget to track committee, right? And you're kind of doing everything yourself with the help of your committee. I would think that we should try to get Eric some help, especially for generating all the paper and everything that comes out of this committee, maybe I can't, you know, but I'm sure Martha, you, you would help. You probably are, you probably are mentally, you know, I know that is complicated, but I mean, if you need any other help from any of, at least our board and some of the other boards, I mean, I should think, you know, for this meeting, so I, I thank Martha and some of the other. I don't want to thank Eric for all of the time and energy in this whole committee, it's simply remarkable the amount of information and professional manner that it's been presented over the last few months, and, and now it's really getting us to the finish line for the next step of whatever it's looking for. And it's a lot of work, so we need a motion, like last we suggested, so we got a motion? Wait a minute, we'll get it.
A motion to have a workshop on the 28th at a location to be announced, 7 o'clock.
Sounds good. October 28th, 7 o'clock to be announced, is the motion on the board? Any discussion? All those in favor, should we recommend that the people that are going to be invited to it are just over the, we're going to have the planning board, FinCon, Capitol Planning Board, anyone else? Send a citation, anyone else? Do you think that very collectively, would help anyone know, yes, no?
You can think about it.
All right, yep, Chief of Police might be there. All right, then, we've come a long way.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. So, I think we're back to our business.
Yeah, B is where you left off.
No, thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
In accordance with last September, 6:52, our permits retail licensing opening time, a lot of 10 a.m. reviewing sign, and I guess we have different places that have asked for us to sign with a change. I can read this, but I didn't know they couldn't open soon, what's going on?
Right now, right now, our faculty.
Right, right. So they can't open before?
According to the voted state law, as right, as a 20-20 parrot, they may open at 10 a.m. is it?
Yes, 10 a.m.
And except that, in order to change the license, we have to file.
With the licensing.
So there's the licensing. So the ones that I have, the ones that sent that applies to things, I think there's still two out there that have applied, and they're like, it's not.
Now, they're all in, in our packet, do we have originals that you're going to pass around the side?
I do.
So, I'd entertain a motion, if everyone's okay with this, to sign the Form 43s by the licensing authority, which is us.
So will.
Discussion? Any other discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, number C is the review, and I suppose it is our final review, and then signing the final decision for the Borrego solar array at Agno Road. Do you all have that in your packets?
What? Mr. Eric.
Because it is a little different from the other one you have.
Right, and you can do, this is not the final document, we're still waiting for some information, but what I was going to ask the board to do, is it requires a signature representing the town, if the board is satisfied with the information that you had to review, draft, this is what Lisa proposed, to vote to allow me to execute it when she gives us the final draft.
Okay.
This just still has draft.
It's still that, okay. Well, do me a favor too, Kathy, can you get this part of the decision out to all the boards so they can look at, because there is two changes on this, there's the one above the trees and the money. Oh, you got it, and you, you got it in your document?
Yep.
Okay, good, okay, good. You've got it, Mike, you've got it, they're all there. So, I think this is the same, because I mentioned that it's the same, except for maybe six now is inserted with the figures for the trees, and number 14 is showing what the applicant is going to, well, second, agree to for taxation for the pilot. Now, if I understand, what you just asked, the motion from the board, Tracy, should be to do what?
Again, assuming you're satisfied with everything that was voted last, and the way, last meeting, the way Lisa has presented it, that you would vote to allow the town administrator to execute the final document that Lisa presents.
And then would you come back and sign that?
No, that I would sign, that I would execute the document.
Now, before you make that motion, maybe we should really look at this and see if there's any changes or change, Dave, did you look at that?
Your hat is as good as my hat, your easiest is as good as my hat.
Michael, did you get a chance to look at this? Chuck, did you get a chance to look at this?
I'll have to be the way.
As long as everyone's satisfied, then we'll proceed, if we're not, we'll take a little more time to look at this now.
I guess I just don't understand that, with the special permit granting authority, I don't understand that having you executed versus us signing, I don't, what is the difference there?
I've done it before on newer documents, for lease agreements, for sale of land, I, I don't know, this, this document that you have in front of you is not ready for signature. It says draft on it, I had come in, I had hoped that we would be able to sign it, that this is not final.
Tracy?
And there is a deadline.
Oh, that's what I was, that's my next question.
Did Martha leave? I'm not sure when the deadline is, let me see if I can catch her.
This was final, but there must have been some changes, there must have been some changes.
Yeah, mine doesn't stick back.
See, if, if it was going to be two weeks from now, or whenever our next meeting is, then maybe just vote on our next meeting, but we'll have to wait to see what Tracy's saying.
Can I just ask, is there any more action that you would be taking with the director of the special town meeting?
You sure you don't want to say anything?
Not that you're not fascinated.
Yeah.
Interesting.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
So we'll see you next week.
Bye, Wendy.
Okay. 14 days after the vote.
Well, that's what it was.
This is the pilot.
Yep.
That, that you have in front of you. The decision is what you as the SBDA have to sign.
They have the decision to sign.
You have the decision.
I have the pilot.
Okay, okay, that's what the confusion is, I'm sorry, I thought you were looking at the pilot.
No. I have still.
Okay. Okay, yeah, still, the, this is the final decision. If that's the final, that has to be signed by each of you.
Now, the other question, the other question would be, we're signing something that says the tax applicant is authorized and the town agrees to a certain figure here for that pilot for 20 years, is that going to change?
That is not going to change, that's what we, that's exactly what we negotiated and what we agreed to, but the pilot agreement that I have is still a draft format, yeah.
So we would, but it's two things to do, we vote to authorize you to finalize.
The pilot.
And then we vote to sign the final document in Kathy's.
Exactly.
And we can vote to disconnect, yes.
Right. Sorry.
Okay, please move in, I move that we assign the decision.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Mike, in favor of signing the document? Yep, yep, okay.
So that's it? And Tracy, do you need us to authorize you to continue with that?
To, to execute the pilot.
I make a motion to authorize Tracy to finalize.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good.
Good.
The minutes, I think everyone was here, and everyone looked at the minute.
Motion to accept the draft, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Cultural council recommendation is the appointment of, I believe, two people, do they have to be present for this? No, right, so, they've got their kind of informal bios in the packet. I don't know if you guys got a chance to look at them, did you look, Dave?
Yep.
Got everyone with a people? Motion?
Motion to.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving right along, communications, Borrego has requested to continue the special permit hearing for 136 Main Street from October 28th to November 21st, I mean, 25th.
The letter actually says year 1014.
Now, does this do anything to any timelines or anything? No, this is, this is just the budget, nothing starts, what a funny thing, right, 2014, when you look at it, it just sticks right out. All right, so a motion?
Motion to, can, to move the public hearing from the 28th to the 25th? I don't know.
What do you think this is about?
I'm just saying, procedurally, we might have to open a public hearing and then make it anyway.
On that, on the 20th.
8th?
You're absolutely right, yeah, yeah, I remember doing that, huh?
So that's fine too.
So that'd be the first thing we do before we start our workshop?
Good idea.
Yeah, we're going to remember that?
I bet.
In the minutes, and someone will. So, that'd be the first thing we do before we start our workshop?
Good idea.
Yeah. We're gonna remember that?
I bet. In the minutes, and someone will.
I'll try real hard to remember that.
Meeting updates, any? Executive session, none. Motion to adjourn.
I have a question before you adjourn. The, um, the schedule for meetings in November would be November eleventh and November twenty fifth. November eleventh is Veterans Day, so we can't have public hearings on the meeting of the eleven. And the assessors want to have their tax levy, the public hearing on the tax levy on the twenty fifth, so you would actually have now two public hearings, the assessors' tax levy and Borrego for one thirty-six Main Street. Is October twenty fifth a workable date for everyone, is all I'm asking?
So, now we're gonna.
November, I'm sorry, November twenty.
We're gonna kind of run back up the location.
The, the, um, assessors' tax hearing, I think it generally takes ten minutes.
I was gonna say, I don't remember that being a dragged out thing, yeah.
Yeah, so that's.
Bud does that pretty quick.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, November twenty fifth is a workable date. We have to put.
Okay, we're okay?
Very good. I won't be here, but yes, it's not.
And then Kathy will, she wins on us. Motion to adjourn, uh, the motion's been made, the discussion done, um, all those in favor?
All right, aye.